Hi, I'm Janet Anderson and I called over to the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, August 16th, 2022 at 7:30 PM. The open meetings law changes enacted in the New York State budget enabled us to have this meeting by video conference during an emergency declaration. And on Saturday, that emergency declaration was extended to September 12th, 2022. The board has agreed to virtually as long as circumstances allow. I expect our September meeting to be in person at 79 Baton Road, but if the governor issues another extension to the emergency, we would then meet virtually. No one is at our in-person meeting location at 79 Baton Road. This meeting is being recorded. Kirsten Conrad has confirmed that the YouTube feed is active and working and that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements fulfilled. We intend to post a recording and a transcript of this meeting to the town website. And the Zoom video will also be available on the town's YouTube channel. Joining me on this Zoom conference from the Town of Lewisboro are members of the Planning Board, Charlene and Delicato, Jerome Kerner, Greg LaSorsa, and I don't know if Bruce is on yet, but if not, I do expect Bruce Thompson to join us. In any case, we have a quorum and thus we can conduct the business of the board and vote on any matters that come before the board. Also on the conference here are Planning and Wetland Consultant Jan Johansson and Council Judge Seibert, as well as our Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conrad. We do have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. That's the only time we expect to take public comments. I will describe the process before we begin the public hearing in just a few minutes. We ask the public to remain muted and without video until that point. We ask any applicants that are not currently engaging in dialogue to mute their lines. This will help everyone hear over the inevitable background noises. Now, members of the public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewissborrowgov.com. And again, the public can see and hear this meeting live on Lewisboro TV YouTube channel and we intend to post it there for future reviews by the public. Okay, and to ease the recording of our votes, I will poll board members individually. So with that, let's get started. The first item on our agenda is a decision, it's calendar number 08-02 PB. This is JVG Estates, formerly the Popoli subdivision on 1437 Route 35. This is now on Bluestone Lane, South Salem, New York. And this is a request for a wetland bond reduction. So this application had been approved in 2009 with subsequent amendments. And in July, the applicant appeared before us in accordance with the resolution to ask for a reduction in the wetland bond. And the board asked for a resolution to be prepared for tonight's meeting. And it has been distributed to the board. So, Judd, maybe I'll ask you to go through this?
Sure. This is a request with regard to the JVG subdivision for a reduction of a wetland bond. The wetland bond relates solely to activity that was authorized under the wetland permit issued for this project. It does not relate to any sort of security for infrastructure improvements related to the subdivision. Because it's limited to the wetland activity, the board has the authority to make a decision with regard to a bond reduction without referral to the town board. We're going to see that in a few moments with regard to another performance security reduction request. The approving resolution had basically a step down, as we often do with wetland permits, in terms of allowing the performance security to sunset or phase out over a period of years, provided that plantings attain a certain survival rate and all is in good condition. We do have confirmation from Jan, you know, in a wetland capacity that the necessary threshold has been satisfied for this particular reduction. It will reduce the current security, which is previously had been reduced by a little over $18,000. It will keep an additional $7400 in security, which is kind of the final phase. And it is, you know, set forth in what I would say are relatively pro forma resolutions to the board's consideration.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution. Yes, go ahead, Jerome.
Yeah, motion to approve the resolution as prepared and discussed by Judd Seibert.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this resolution? Okay, I will poll the board. Charlene? Jerome?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes.
And I know that Bruce is trying to connect, but I don't see him yet. Oh, there you are. Go ahead, Bruce.
Aye.
And I also say aye, so the the motion to approve the resolution passes and that can proceed. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is calendar number 03-13 PB, calendar number 13-16 WP. This is Silver Mine Preserve, Silver Mine Drive and Lockwood Road, South Salem, New York. And this is the application for subdivision wetland activity and stormwater permits for the construction of a 13 lot subdivision. So, this Silver Mine application was granted a SECRA NEG DECK and preliminary approval in 2017. And the cluster development was approved by the town board in May 2017. The NEG DECK confirmed the absence of significant environmental impacts and it was based upon an examination of plans, data and reports, including analysis of groundwater supply. The subdivision will be serviced by individual wells approved by the County Health Department. We also looked at wetlands impacts, traffic site analysis and similar environmental issues. After the applicant submitted the application for final approval, the Planning Board opened and closed a public hearing in June 2022. This public hearing was held open for 14 days for written comments. We did receive additional comments from the public. And the board had asked for a resolution to be prepared for the July meeting, but at the time of that meeting, the resolution was still a work in progress. At our July meeting, we agreed to table the matter to tonight's meeting. So after the July meeting, Judd was in contact with Jerry Tortorella, the Silver Mines Attorney, concerning the final approval of this project. They focused on formulating an approving resolution that would meet with the approval of the Westchester Land Trust, which was poised to accept the title to the open space parcel. As the resolution of final approval was being prepared, Westchester Land Trust advised that, notwithstanding its best intentions, it faced near and long-term constraints that could preclude a commitment on its part to a definite timetable for the design, the completion of the trail network and for the ability to ensure trail maintenance in perpetuity. Westchester Land Trust reminded us that their primary goal is conservation and land protection. Unfortunately, these recently voiced concerns and Westchester Land Trust's hesitancy to make commitments either to timelines at the beginning or in perpetuity led to an impasse in the finalization of the approving resolution. This is the result of the competing tension between foregoing a recreation fee and trying to ensure that a publicly accessible trail network on the open space parcel would not only come to pass but be maintained in perpetuity. So from the board's perspective, a waiver of the recreation fee is only acceptable if, in fact, definite commitments are made to design, the installation and the long-term maintenance of this trail network for public use. While the applicant has maintained it will with Westchester Land Trust endeavor to create this network and to provide for its use, Westchester Land Trust emphasized that it could not, again, due to operational and legal limitations, make any binding commitments in that regard. So we were at an impasse, recognizing the deadlock over the resolution conditions and difficulties associated with the trail network. Judd, Jan and I discussed a change in direction concerning the disposition and the future use of the open space parcel. We collectively concluded that a better course might be to forego development of the trail system, thereby eliminating future public use of the open space parcel and in turn directing the applicants to pay the required recreation fee. And this fee will be a total of $110,000 payable to the town. Under this approach, the open space parcel will, as required by the town's code cluster development requirements, remain open and undisturbed in perpetuity. Rather than being conveyed to Westchester Land Trust, this parcel will be held by the subdivision HOA, Homeowners Association. Upon creation and conveyance to the Homeowners Association, the parcel will be deed restricted for the purposes of preserving its open space characteristics. It need not be open for public use and it need not have trails. It is, it is open space. So we identified the benefits from this approach as maintaining the integrity of the cluster subdivision concept. So even though the open space parcel will not be available for use by the public, it will be held by the HOA and it will remain undisturbed in perpetuity and that meets the code requirements. Instead of a trail network, the design, completion and long-term maintenance of which present ongoing enforcement issues for the planning board and for the town, the town will receive a recreation fee of $110,000. We also felt that elimination of the trail network will address many of the concerns raised by the owners of properties adjoining the project site. This included uncertainty about the trail design, the proximity of trails to existing residences, whether or not it would connect to Silver Mine Road and other items like that. Finally, we just felt, in summary, this was a more streamlined and from a long-term enforcement and oversight perspective, an easier course to administer. In this regard, you know, even if Westchester Land Trust or another organization were to require the open space parcel and commit to the eventual design creation and maintenance of the trail network, it would be difficult for the town to respond to any failure of any land trust to do so. So while making no commitments, we approached Jerry and her clients with this idea and they were amenable. So that's where we are now. The resolution that was prepared and distributed to the board incorporates this approach. So with that, I don't know, Jerry, if you want to make any comments?
Good evening, Jerry Tortorella of Hockerman Tortorella and Wexstein. And we're counsel for the applicant. We also have Eric Moss and Sue Haft and Tim Allen, who are tuning in and available at this meeting. We don't really have any comments other than to talk about the structure of payment of the recreation fee and also the bus stop. Those are the two issues that I think we'd like to discuss tonight with respect to the resolution with the board. You know, we did not want to see this outcome come to pass. You know, we tried very hard with the land trust to be able to make the public access work, but it just became insurmountable. And the land trust, you know, graciously agreed that as long as there would be land preservation, notwithstanding all of the time and resources they had dedicated to trying to see public access become a reality, they would step aside just to make sure that the subdivision could go ahead and that it would be done in a way that just would preserve the open space and its character. And so that open space will have the stormwater basins, some of the stormwater facilities on it. That was always part of the proposal. It's just naturally the way the stormwater basins had to be designed because they're at low points. But other than that, you know, we expect a situation where it will be retained in, you know, in its current state. Unless at some point in the time in the future, the HOA would like to do something with that property. And then that's, you know, that's a matter for the future.
Okay, so we could either go through the resolution. I know it came out recently. Jerry did mention two different items that we might want to discuss, but I think we should look at it in context of the of the resolution perhaps first.
Yeah, I'll, Jen, I'll turn it over to Jan. Just in terms of the overall approach. You know, as Jerry mentioned, we closed the public hearing. We obviously have heard from members of the public in the the public hearing associated with the final approval. We were in discussions, you know, in an effort to bring this trail system, you know, to fruition and do it in a way that would, you know, provide certainty that it would be developed in a time, you know, in a timeframe that was recognized, that was enforceable. As Jerry said, Jen, as you aptly said at the outset, there are just certain constraints with regard to the Westchester Land Trust. And I would think possibly with other similar organizations in terms of making those kinds of long-term commitments with regard to public access as opposed to straight land preservation. We tried to work through them. And, you know, at the end of the day, I think that we, Jan, you and I and Jan reached the conclusion, but I think it's a fair one, that the easiest way to kind of cut through this was to preserve the the overall integrity and intention of the cluster subdivision, which is really to preserve the open space and to create the open space, make sure it's maintained to eliminate the public use component and apply a rec fee. So that's what the resolution does. There are some other adjustments in the resolution that's been presented to the board that relate really just to the phasing of overall site development. But even with those changes, I think the, you know, all of the underlying, you know, conditions and mechanisms to make sure that infrastructure and improvements are constructed and that things move in an orderly process are there. So, Jan, I don't know if you have anything to add?
I'm happy to go through the resolution if the board would like me to. I think you've seen prior iterations. I don't know if you, I'm going to go through the body of the resolution or focus on the conditions, whatever, whatever you'd like.
I think it might be helpful to talk about, one of the major changes, I think, that came about was separating the timing, as Judd just mentioned, of what was a separate tax parcel but became Lot 13 and how that is part of this. And I see Charlene has her hand up. So maybe Charlene, go ahead.
I have three general questions. One is, and I don't know how this works, the rec fee, does it go into trust for the Recreation Department or for open space in the town? Or is it just put into the general fund?
So I did, I did have an email dialogue with Leo, who is the comptroller of the town. He gets that, it goes into a separate account and it is held for town to decide how they want to. It's only released when the town allocates it for a specific purpose for parks and rec or for some kind of recreation. So it is held separately.
Thank you, Jen. The second question is, when there is a conservation easement or any kind of declaration, can you give a copy of it to the Planning Board or to the assessor? So we have some kind of record that we can start keeping on these conservation easements? If that's okay?
No, that will occur. And the declaration will be prepared and recorded with regard to the open space parcel and that will be provided to Planning Board Counsel, Town Attorney and to the, and to the town assessor.
I would just add to that, though. I think one of the things that has happened in the past is sometimes there are easements or conservation agreements that enter onto parcels that the town kind of loses track of. And I shouldn't say it that way, that are not readily apparent. And, and sometimes the homeowners aren't aware of it until they see it. So I would like to try to figure out if there's a way to, to maybe compile some of the easements and conservation agreements that have been made over time. So maybe it's a good point, we should try to keep that front and center as we think about a permanent way of, of bringing these to light. Usually, we, we do find out about them when, because they're recorded with the deed, but it's not really a town resource available. Okay, go ahead, Charlene. You had a third one?
My last question is, the HOA are responsible for the open space in the sense of if there's a, if there's a fence around it or whatever, that they have to maintain it?
Yeah, the HOA will be responsible for the maintenance of the open space parcel. And the maintenance obligation will be one of basically maintaining its open space characteristics as of the time the lot is created.
Only because it wasn't specifically mentioned in the resolution, that's all. It said, you know, gave examples and, but it didn't give the open space.
But those, those long-term obligations are also a matter of the code in terms of what, in terms of clustering and what needs to happen with, what the long-term obligations are with regard to, with the maintenance of that type of open space parcel.
Yeah, I think that the resolution dealt with it in kind of a shorthand fashion because if we were to go into too much detail, it would actually spell out the whole agreement. But, but that is correct. I mean, and implicit in, in making sure that it has to be to the satisfaction, the agreement and documents and all the covenants, easements and restrictions have to be to the satisfaction of the Planning Board Attorney. That's kind of the way that we make sure that we are meeting the requirements of the code and the intent of the restriction.
Just wanted on the record, that's all.
Yeah, no, that's fair. No, that's fair.
That's it.
Okay, any other questions before we ask Jan to maybe hit some of the highlights that we've talked about so far, we've alluded to in this? Okay, Jan, I think it's over to you.
Sure. As I mentioned, I think the board had seen versions of this before. Would you like me to do an overview of the body of the resolution or really focus on the conditions?
I think conditions.
I think conditions, yeah.
All right, so as typically the case, the resolution's broken down into, the conditions are broken down into several different categories. The first being conditions to be satisfied by the applicant prior to the signing of the construction drawings. So condition one speaks to the applicant being required to obtain a highway work permit for access onto the town road, realty subdivision approval from the Health Department and coverage under the Speedy's general permit from the DEC. Condition two speaks to potential future pool locations. And at one time, or the applicant had identified certain lots that could accommodate a pool. I forget how many of the lots showed pools, but there have been some changes in the Westchester County Health Department regulations that kind of will result in smaller sized septic systems. And the thought was that this was really the constraint to installing pools on all of the lots, just the pure size and house location, septic was tight to fit everything in. But with these modifications, it's, it's possible that some, if not all, could contain a pool. So condition two has the applicant removing future pool locations from all of the plans. And there will be no restriction on pool sites on any of the lots. And in the future, if a homeowner would like to install a pool, they would take the normal course, submit an application to be reviewed by the Building Department, my office or the Town Engineer, the Wetland Inspector and obtain all necessary permits and wouldn't necessarily require a trip back to the Planning Board. Condition three, some updates to that plan. I'm going to quickly go through these. The street trees, we had asked them to increase the caliper size of those trees to three to three and a half inches. Condition seven requires the applicant to obtain a Wetland Implementation Permit from the Wetland Inspector. Eight is a preparation of a detailed cost of construction estimate and engineering inspection fee. Nine imposes a three-year monitoring period on wetland mitigation, which is typical and reporting each year to the Planning Board. The rest of these conditions in the category are pretty pretty typical of any resolution. The next category, prior to the commencement of work, and that's just making sure all the plans are, have been filed, signed, filed appropriately and that there's a site visit conducted and to ensure that there is coverage under the Speedy's permit. The next category is prior to the signing of the subdivision plat itself. That plat will be prepared by a licensed lands fair. Will contain the Health Department signature, the DEC Wetland Boundary Signature, signatures of the owners. Again, removing residences, pools and driveways from the plat. We showed those on the construction drawings, but typically not on the plat itself. Condition 25 is the establishing of the the open space parcel. And then just filing the subdivision plat. Conditions 28 and 29, 28, typical of any subdivision, the applicant either installs prior to the signing of the plat all of the common improvements, the road, the drainage, curb and grading. And completes that construction within 180 days of the signing of the resolution. Or alternatively submits a bond that would cover the cost of those improvements. So the applicant has that option, either construct or to bond. So that's conditions 28 and 29. They chose to bond, that bond would be equal to the amount of the engineering inspection cost of construction estimate. So once one of those items, either one of those options are completed, they file the plat and then they're off the building permits. So that's the next, starting with condition 33. So prior to the first building permit, issuance of the first building permit, they're going to have all their legal documentation, their easements, covenants, restrictions that are outlined in Ms. Tortorella's letter to the Planning Board of October 5th. Those will be prepared, reviewed by counsel, myself and filed. Condition 35 states that there can be no certificate of occupancy for any lot. Lot 1, 2 and 3 are served by a common driveway that extends off the private road. This is saying that that there can't be a CO for any of those homes until that common driveway is complete to the satisfaction of the Town Engineer. And a survey submitted. And a survey submitted. Thirty-six gives them the ability to bond that somewhere to the road. Thirty-seven's the as-built survey. For lots one through twelve. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, can't construct a house on lots one through twelve without the, the common improvements being completed. And a survey submitted. Thirty-eight speaks to the underground water storage tank. That's to be installed prior to the issuance of a building permit for lots one through twelve. And that, that tank will be installed by the applicant. It will be filled by the applicant. There's a, a test that needs to be completed. No pressure test. That tank will have to be kind of inspected and by the, by the fire department and then gets turned over to the HOA. If the fire department were to train on that or use that tank for any purpose and evacuate water from the tank, it will be the fire department's responsibility to refill the tank. It will get filled the first time by the applicant. What if the fire department uses water out of the tank? It will be their responsibility to refill it, although any maintenance, repair, replacement of the tank is on the HOA. Thirty-nine just speaks to when an individual lot comes in for a building permit, they're going to submit their health department approvals for the well and the septic. An individual residential site plan demonstrate compliance with the subdivision plat. And we'll review. Review that plan prior to the issuance of a, of a building permit. Forty-one speaks to, there's a particular lot that requires a wetland permit where that requires disturbance within the wetland buffer than an individual wetland permit would be issued by the wetland inspector prior to issuance of a building permit. Conditions during construction, those are typical, you know, have your, all your plans on site, the resolution on site, the SWIP on site. Building department or town engineer can inspect at any time. Construction has to be monitored by the applicant with a qualified inspector. And they're responsible for performing their weekly speedy's permit inspections and filing those reports with the town. Prior to the issuance of a C O. Before C O for lots one through twelve, they would have to install their landscaping, wetland mitigation and smitten as-built map of that, the planting. Confirmation that the thirty thousand gallon underground storage tank is installed, tested. Satisfactory to the Vista Fire Department, test results submitted. The fire department can confirm all their, the connections are appropriate. That will get signed off prior to the issuance of the first C O. Forty-eight is up for discussion, I guess, since, I'm sure, after I get through this, we'll talk about the bus stop. The shelter. Forty-nine's the as-built survey for the common driveway servicing lots one through three. Fifty is just, you, you can't get a C O until, for an individual lot, until all the project infrastructure serving, servicing that lot is installed and inspected. As-built surveys, again, for each individual lot. And then finally, prior to the last C O that the, the speedy's permit would be closed out with the issuance of the notice of termination. Then other conditions is required by the code, all utilities are going to be underground. Fifty-seven speaks to the recreation fee of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. They can pay that all upfront or an installment as specified. Fifty thousand dollars upon the signing of the final plat. And two payments of ten thousand dollars upon the issuance of the first through six C Os. Fifty-eight speaks to the the maintenance, repair and replacement of the fire storage tank, as I indicated. The fire department will have the perpetual right to access and utilize that tank for firefighting and training purposes. The tank will initially be filled by the applicant. Thereafter, the Vista Fire Department shall refill the tank whenever it evacuates water from the tank. Maintenance and repair of all common improvements, the private road, the common driveways, the drainage, your street trees, wetland mitigation, fencing. Especially trailhead parking, that should be stricken. Think that parking area ends up, gets eliminated. The bus stop, street sign, it's all the responsibility of the HOA. That'll be, that's indicated in Ms. Tortorella's memorandum. And that the applicant's responsible for the replacement of any dead, dying, missing or deceased street trees. And common landscaping up to the issuance of the last C O. And sixty-one just speaks to the preservation of existing stone walls within the open space parcel. But they're, they're not to be removed. Anybody still awake?
Yep. Thank you, Jan. I, I think, I think a couple of things there were, so lot thirteen can generally proceed sort of ahead and separately from a lot of these conditions, so it can get built ahead of some of these things. The, the couple of things that we did have, since there was going to be a bus stop enclosure in the plans on lot thirteen. That's currently in as required to be built. And I know Jerry brought this up before, so I don't, I think the, the bus stop had been on the plans, it's, it was, and bus stop, this is aimed at schoolchildren, not, not a transit bus, but it's as a place for sheltering children while they're waiting for the bus at the end of the road. And there was a question that came up about whether this came about because of the request of the planning board, and I don't know enough the history to know whether that, I'll throw it open to people to, to ask. I mean, it seems to me, I'll just say, like, if the alternative is to have, you know, twelve cars sitting there protecting their kids from the rain, it seems like a good idea, but I don't, I don't know the history of it. I don't know anything about it. And I wonder if any of you do remember.
Remember.
Okay. So Jerry, is it the, the request of the applicant that this be eliminated? Or what is the? This was one of the items you wanted to talk about. Oh, I see. Wait, Jan has his hand up. Let me get to that first.
I didn't know I rose, I raised my hand. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I don't know how I did that. I lowered it down.
Okay, Jerry.
Thank you. You know, when this came up and we were reading, we were reading the resolution and we were talking about it, you know, the, the people on our team were kind of scratching our heads saying, where did this come from? We couldn't recall it either. We couldn't recall what function or purpose the shelter would offer, just given the, the practice and custom among people who take their children to a bus stop to be picked up. And, and it's, you know, rarely do children leave the vehicles and stand alone in a bus shelter while they are waiting for a bus. They're either out of the cars and playing or they're you know, in the cars with their, with their parents waiting for the bus. And we don't even know if there's a situation here, and it's still to be determined, I think, whether or not the bus will actually go on to Silver Mine, on to Satum Way and actually pick up the children like they do in so many other locations at each of the driveways or a few driveways along the, along the subdivision road. So it, it seemed like it, it really didn't, I, I mean, I understand the idea behind it, but it doesn't really serve the purpose that it was intended because people's practices and the, and the culture of, of people and children taking school buses really isn't consistent with standing in a shelter. So now we have a shelter that we're expected to construct. And it's in a location across the street from a private residence. It needs maintenance. It's, you know, on the edge of the road. I mean, it, it really doesn't seem to make much sense to us. And so our request is that we actually strike that as a requirement of an improvement that we have to construct for this subdivision.
So if we, if, if it was not in there and the HOA at some point decided they would like to have that it was actually on lot thirteen, was it not?
Well, you know, I, I can't say to you, and, and if Tim Allen knows off the top of his head, I welcome him to jump in, but I, I don't know if it was in the right of way for the road, or if it was actually physically on to all of lot thirteen.
Okay, it might have been
It, it was on lot thirteen. I believe we were intending to put an easement on lot thirteen to create the bus stop.
So maybe maybe an approach to this would be, because I certainly know that when I was standing on the bus, now this was a long time ago, I would have loved to have had a shelter somewhere there. What we could do is require an easement to be put on that property in case the HOA in the future decided that a bus stop would be and I'm, I mean, using bus stop wrong, an enclosure for the bus stop would be, would be something they wanted. We could put, we could, they would then be able to do it, but they wouldn't, it wouldn't be required to be built, you know, prior to the C O of any of these lots.
That sounds good to me.
What do you think, Jerry? I mean, it, it is a, it does require an easement on the property, but it's, it would be the, up to the HOA to do.
Yeah, my, my only concern is, is every time you try to sell a lot and people look at the easements that are burdening the lot, one more easement, you know, gets to be another burden and imposition on the lot. And I get concerned about that because it's, you know, so open-ended in, in terms of what might actually occur there. I, I guess the question is, Tim, do we think that there's any room within the right of way where that bus shelter could be located in the future?
It would be a minimalist area. We have to have the shoulder and then the embankment. So really not a whole lot of room in the right of way, but certainly it would be a possibility. The HOA will own that right-of-way piece, so.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
I saw Jerome had his hand up.
Yeah. It seems to me the, I haven't got it in front of me, but the current plan has a parking area at the trailhead, which of course is not part of the plan any longer. Seems to me that would be a location for not an enclosure, but a lean-to or just something to keep the rain off your head if you're being dropped off.
The only problem though, Jerome, it's not, it's not at the end of the road.
Right. It's pretty close, though.
But that, but there's also an issue as to what the school district will ultimately decide in terms of a pick point. And sometimes we've run into that issue in terms of use of the private road, yeah.
That's true.
I mean, I don't know that we're confirmed that the current location is somewhere where the, where the school district would select as a pickup location either.
Correct, but it's, it's logical. It's at the end of the road, which is typically where they would, would look to have it. And the road there has sight, sight line, sight distance. You know, this isn't I think we're so close on everything else. This isn't to me a huge piece, but I, it appears that the, that having an enclosure for kids to wait for the bus made it, was important enough to get into the plans at some point. It's just we don't have any history on this, so.
Well, it didn't make it, it didn't make it into the plan, but it made it into the resolution.
It was, no, it's, it sits on the plan. I did.
Yeah, there's a a shelter location shown on the plans.
I don't recall it being discussed as a planning board requirement, frankly.
I, I think it's a cultural situation we're in today where, where parents are really uncomfortable just leaving the kids at the end of the road. You very rarely see that happen anymore where the parents aren't there. That's just something food for thought there that I, I think we live in a different society than we did back in our day when we used to walk to school without a problem or stay at the end of the roadway for the bus. It's a lot more diligence these days. And rightfully so.
Yeah, so, I mean, and, and if there's I mean, whether people would actually really leave their kids and, and avoid the blackout of of cars at the end of the road, I have no idea. So.
I would be okay with eliminating it.
I'm going to say, it doesn't sound like anybody here is really adamant that it has to be there. So you know, I guess I'm, I'm okay eliminating it if other people are as well. I'm gonna I think we can do this with like thumbs. Oh, go ahead, Bruce. You're muted, of course.
By eliminating it, it doesn't mean that it can't, it can't be accomplished later on. Right? I mean, i- i- it could be something that the HOA could approach the town and say, we want to do.
Yeah, the problem is there's not space. I mean, that's why I was saying, well, maybe put an easement on the property so that if, if they wanted to do it in the future, there's, there's room to do it, if the HOA wanted to do it in the future.
Well, that would be part of what they had to do, though, by, by, you know, they'd have to show how they would provide for it. So, and once again, trying to precipitate all of this is a very difficult task. So just so long as they're not precluded from coming back to the town with a proposal to construct a shelter.
True.
Correct. I don't think that would actually typically need to come to the town. But I don't know.
It's a structure, so they wouldn't need, it needs to meet zoning requirements.
Right. They wouldn't be precluded, but they would need to make whatever arrangements they need to make as an HOA and with any effective property on us. But they wouldn't be precluded.
Okay, so it sounds to me like we're okay with getting rid of oh, I just lost it. That was number forty-seven, forty forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
So, so we are okay with striking that from the resolution?
And it would also mean an elimination in current paragraph fifty-nine of reference to the bus stop structure. And as Jan mentioned, trailhead parking.
Right. Okay. So then the other big question is recognizing that the recreation fee is both a relatively substantial amount of funding for the applicant, but also a relatively substantial amount of funding for the town. Do we think as a group that we want to impose the burden of, of, and, and the benefit to the town of asking for it all upfront or is a sort of deferred payment schedule, okay? And if so, this is just one of obviously many that we could have. So I just open that as a as a question. I, Jerry, do you want to make a comment about this or?
Well, I do. I mean, we certainly would like to have the payments staggered on an installment basis. You know, I, I know we've worked, we've worked a long and hard Um, you know, I, I know we've worked, we've worked a long and hard time and there've been a lot of hours devoted to working with the Westchester Land Trust, which has, in an effort to try to make these trails public. And, and that has really consumed a lot of time and resources, uh, professional time and resources, which translates into substantial fees for our client. Which, you know, I understand that it's the cost of business in doing a development, but this was kind of a unique aspect to it. Um, so what we had hoped we would do is have a structured payment. And one that really would work for our client, because they had not been anticipating having to make this payment, uh, is if they could break it up into four quarterly payments. The first quarterly payment be made at the time that the plat was filed. Uh, and the amount of that would be twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars if my math is correct. And then in each quarter thereafter, or every three months thereafter, we'd make the additional uh, quarterly payment so that, you know, and over the course of a year, after the, the map is filed, the payment, the full payment would be made. I know it's less upfront, but it's conceivable that it actually gets paid more quickly uh, in the structure that I'm proposing than, um, in, in kind of the concept that's laid out in the resolution. And I'd ask the board members to consider that structure.
That would, Jerry, that would be strictly on a time basis with the clock starting upon signature of the plat. That would be the first quarterly payment, and then we, we would just time it off that, three months, three months, three months.
That, that's the idea. And I'm assuming that the signing of the plat is going to be happening very close in time to when we actually file it, so.
Right, right.
Okay, so the first, first question is.
But so I just, then, I, I think everybody gets it, but at, at that point, then not dependent on the pace of construction, simply based on, on the, the timing of the, of the, of the plat.
Correct, correct. And Eric and Sue are around here. If they had questions about that, I invite them to, to ask the questions. But that is what we had discussed and kind of what they could, they could handle and, and swing.
I agree with Jerry that that could potentially, uh, uh, have the entire payment paid quicker than
Yeah.
the proposed schedule, because you don't know when lots are gonna get developed, so.
Right.
I, I'm good with that.
Yeah, it's, it isn't quite such a big upfront chunk, but it certainly is at a time, um, period. I think from the town's perspective, I'm just guessing that the comptroller would like to know date certain that, that monies are coming in, um, for planning purposes and that, that that would certainly, so based on that assumption that I'm making, I would, I would be all right with that as well. I think I see you nodding, Greg. Is that, yes? Okay. Um, and Jerome, any thoughts on that?
Okay.
And Bruce? All right, so we now have a resolution kind of, um, not quite the way we, we talked about it. Um, go ahead, Bruce.
I have one, one more comment and keeps going back and forth in my head. Um, as the owner of the open space lot, the HOA, would it be wise to have anything in the resolution that says the HOA is solely responsible for any signage that would appear on this property? Um, occasionally, uh, people take it upon themselves to put up no trespassing signs. That's the best example I can give. Um, and, and I just always want to be sure that they have the authority to do that if they, if they're, if they're, they're doing that. Um, and it was most recently to a, uh, land or nature, had been nature conservancy property. And, uh, there was a big outcry over, uh, hunting on the property. And, uh, so it, it, it led to, um, some pretty heated discussions about, uh, signage and permission, uh, how that permission, uh, came to be.
Bruce, I, I think that's a detail that Jerry and I could work out in connection with the formulation of the HOA documents.
Yeah, okay.
Rather than the resolution.
Makes, that makes sense.
I hear the concern. We can, I think we can, I think we can work on that.
Okay.
I think the, the appropriate step would be a motion to approve the resolution, um, as amended to eliminate paragraph forty-eight to renumber paragraphs forty-nine through sixty-one accordingly. Um, to revise paragraph, current paragraph fifty-seven, now paragraph fifty-six to provide for, um, the payment of installments uh, in quarterly payments, the first quarter, uh, upon the, uh, the, uh, the plat, uh, the chair's signature of the plat with the, uh, remaining payments to be made in three months, in, in, in three payments, in three month, three month intervals thereafter. Uh, and to amend current paragraph fifty-nine, now paragraph fifty-eight, to eliminate the reference to trailhead parking and bus stop structure.
Well said. Anyone want to make that motion?
Did I, did I, did I, Jerry, did I, did I get the installment names?
Yeah, I just, um, I, I just want to make one suggestion. Because there's so many cross, cross references in the resolution already to later paragraphs or earlier paragraphs, is there any benefit to simply, you know, instead of deleting forty-eight and renumbering it, just delete the, the content of forty-eight, but say intentionally deleted? Or is that a practice that this board doesn't like to do?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
What was the terminology again?
It would simply, the, the resolution would simply show a paragraph forty-eight with no text and it would say intentionally deleted.
Intentionally deleted.
And that way we avoid earlier references to, you know, other paragraphs. We, we don't throw off the number. It's, it's easier.
It's the old intentionally left blank page, you know?
Right.
Okay.
So I, I would move that we, uh, approve the resolution as modified in the description just given by our counsel, Judd Seaver.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion of this? Okay, um, I'll pull the board. Jerome?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes.
Bruce?
Aye.
And I also say aye. Um, so the resolution as amended is approved. Um, it's been a long journey, but it looks like we made it. So thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Um, so just technically, um, just trying to figure this out. Yeah, Judd, you'll get a revised resolution to the, uh, to Kierstan.
To Kierstan, yeah.
Perfect. Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. This is calendar number oh eight dash seventeen PB. Um, so first of all, let me remind people about, um, public hearings. The purpose of a public hearing is for the board to hear from the concerns and comments of the public. Comments should be addressed to the planning board, not to the applicant. A public hearing is not meant to be a dialogue, and in general, the board will not respond to comments at the public hearing. We may issue, uh, corrections or clarifications to any statements. The board will take public input into consideration as we continue to review the matter before us. And as previously stated, members of the public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewisburg.gov.com. So the board did invite, um, public comments by email before this meeting. To speak at the hearing, please raise your Zoom hand by clicking on the raised hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And if you're on a phone, you can press pound star nine, excuse me, star nine. We will ask speakers to give their name and address and ask that the comments be kept short. So I'll give a brief introduction to the application. Um, the applicant will give a, a statement really about the conditions regarding the performance bond. You know, we'll talk about any comments, um, have a public comment period and then discussion by the, by the planning board. So, um, this is a public hearing regarding the bond associated with the completion of the infrastructure from the twenty-twenty approval of the car wash at Oak Ridge Commons. And in July, when we met, the board sent a letter to the town board on this matter. And they authorized us, the planning board, to proceed with, um, a public hearing and a decision. So the public hearing was set for tonight. Um, and so with that, I'd like to see if, um, if, I don't know if the, if anyone from the applicant wants to give a brief discussion, um, a statement about, um, about the performance bond and the conditions.
Hi Janet, it's Phil Pine. How are you and board? Um, yeah, so we've completed all the work over there for the car wash, all the infrastructure. It's been inspected. And we're request, we're requesting to get the partial ninety percent of the bond back. That's pretty much it.
I think so. And Jan, have you, um, inspected this?
Yeah, I can confirm that our office inspected, um, the project. We inspected it throughout construction and performed the final inspection. It all is in good order.
Okay, um, does any member of the public have, uh, wish to make a comment about this? Okay, um, I don't, I, I don't see any hands raised and I don't see any, um, anyone waving at me on the screen. So with that, um, I guess I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing. Charlene, I saw the wave of the hands. You're muted, but.
I saw move that the hearing be closed.
Do we have a second? I see Bruce Ray, oh, uh, Greg, you're unmuted, so go ahead. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? I'll pull the board. Um, Jerome?
Yes.
Uh, Charlene?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes.
Bruce?
Aye.
And I'll also say aye. So we have closed the public hearing. We now do have a resolution, um, that was prepared for us and, uh, Chad, I believe you, um, circulated it. So perhaps you'll review the resolution with us?
Yes, um, so, uh, this is a, a bond release resolution, uh, unlike the JBG resolution that we previously acted on. This is for performance security that was posted under provisions of the zoning code. So we needed authorization from the town board to conduct this public hearing and to, uh, place the planning board in a position where it could, um, consider and, and agree to the reduction. Um, that authorization was provided by the town board. Um, as Jan indicated, uh, the, uh, infrastructure associated with the bond, uh, has been satisfactorily completed. Um, the, uh, performance bond conditions, uh, provide that once that occurs, ninety percent is released with a three percent retention, retention, um, that's provided for in the resolution.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution that was previously circulated to us.
I approve. I saw move.
Okay, Bruce, Bruce, uh, move made.
Second.
Thank you, Jerome. Any further discussion on this resolution? Okay, I'll pull the board. Jerome?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes.
Uh, Bruce?
Aye.
And I'll also say aye. So, um, we have approved the resolution that reduces the, um, or releases part, a partial release of the construction performance bond. Thank you all. Okay, um, the next item on our agenda is a site development plan review. This is calendar number eleven dash twenty-two PB. Golden Bridge Village Center, New York State, twenty-two, Golden Bridge, New York. The application for the installation of EV charging stations. Um, we reviewed this application in July and we sent it to the building inspector for review. Um, we did receive a building inspector letter and it discussed the need for a variance and also um, identified um, a few violations which have since been resolved. So basically, right now, um, this, uh, needs to go to the ZBA, but I believe the applicant is on and has some, um, responses to some of the comments that were given. I am.
Sure. Uh, this is Brian Fetterman. I'm, uh, with Plugging Stations and the project manager for this, um, project. Uh, I can share my screen. We actually, uh, put, um, answers to the, um, any more memo that was issued in July. Um, essentially in short, maybe, maybe to save time, I know, um, there's a lot of items on the agenda. Um, essentially, there were several, um, recommendations to add to the drawing. Uh, distance to the center line of the road, um, pass-through distance, um, adding the arbor vady, et cetera. Um, those have all been added. Um, we're still working through with our engineers to, to, um, uh, complete these drawings that say the ninety percent drawings are about ninety percent done. So, um, I should have the completed items there. Um, we should be ready to submit for a spot on the September twenty-eighth zoning board uh, meeting agenda.
Okay, so that would say that, um, we wouldn't see you until October. Um,
So, sorry, go ahead.
If we waited for the ZBA approval. Is that correct?
Um, correct, unless there, I'm not sure, in several instances, we've had a, um, a, I don't want to necessarily call it an emergency meeting, but we've had a meeting outside of the regularly scheduled with some other municipalities, um, zoning entities. Um, if that was possible, we could, we could, uh, possibly meet the September meeting deadline.
No, I think, so I think what I might not have been clear. Um, I think what has to happen is you have to get ZBA approval before we can, um, uh, approve a resolution. So what, I think we'd be waiting for the ZBA. So I think what we could possibly do, um, is ask for a resolution to be prepared so that um, as soon as we hear from the ZBA and if they do, um, if they do approve the, the variance that the building inspector identified as required, then we could, um, move at the next meeting. But we, we do need to wait for a ZBA approval. Um, we have not typically made ZBA approval a condition of a, of an approval of a resolution. So, um.
And that October meeting would be on or around the sixteenth of October?
Um.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth, okay, the middle of the month.
Eighteenth.
Yeah, it's the eighteenth. So, um, I mean, so you weren't able to get to the, the ZBA, which I think meets next or in two weeks, but that, I didn't know if you were getting on the August, um, calendar, but if you're on there, September, yeah, okay. So what we, um, I think what we can do by consensus is ask for preparation of a resolution for the October meeting at this point, um, assuming that you hear good news from the ZBA. So, um, again, we can do that by consensus and I'd look for a thumbs up from the one to yep, okay, it looks like everybody's agree, in agreement. So we can, um, ask for a resolution to be prepared. Um, you know, I think Jan will like, take a look. I know these, um, the submission just came in very recently, but we'll, um, be able to take a look at that and, um, move forward. And we hope that we will be able to do something just as soon as you get back from the ZBA. Okay?
Thank you for your job.
Thank you. Assuming nobody has any other comments? Great. Okay, uh, the next item on our agenda is calendar number oh- the next item on our agenda is calendar number 06-22 PB, calendar number 05-22 WP, calendar number 03-22 SW. This is the Waka Buck Country Club snack bar on Perch Bay Road in Waka Buck, New York. This is the application for beachfront improvements, including renovation of the boathouse, construction of a pavilion, replacement of a snack bar and installation of accessible parking and walkways. So this application has been before us in March, April, June, July, and we did a sit walk on April 9th. In July, we reviewed the part two EAF and we have received the part three EAF. So I, I think our, our primary goal tonight is to review the part three EAF and, and decide if it's um, if it complies with our assessment and then to move forward from there. So I see Dawn is on. Are you? Okay.
Good evening.
Hello. Um, do you want to make any comments on, on the application as it stands now?
So Dawn McKenzie, Registered Landscape Architect from Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture here, representing the Waka Buck Beach Club. Joining me tonight is John Assuma and Pierre Hall from Waka Buck Country Club. Um, I just wanted to, you know, we'll just tick off a couple of things that we did in addition to preparing the part three EAF. So based on comments from the board, we added more trees to be planted on the project. We've actually increased the number of trees to be planted from 45 trees to 57 trees. We have made some minor adjustments to the design by on the far side of the pavilion, the new, the new pavilion that's supposed to be installed by realigning the staircase on that side of the building and making a shift to the location of the cistern. We were able to preserve two additional trees in that location, 24 inch twin oak and 14 inch maple. Those are the ones that I know the, um, we had been asked to see if we could preserve and we were able to do that. In addition to that, there were some species that we were asked to change. The black birch were changed to sugar maples and the American beeches were changed to red oaks. Um, another thing was we were asked to take a look at some thing that looked like erosion up by the water bar on the entrance driveway to the club. Um, and so there is gravel from the driveway washing into the woods in that location and that itself is a maintenance issue, but in order to create some mitigation at the discharge point where the gravel is being discharged into the forest, you know, the club will go in. So we've added to the plan, they'll, you know, do the maintenance to replace the gravel and redistribute it onto the driveway. But they'll also install as part of the project a level spreader at the discharge point to collect anything that's coming from the driveway in one location and any runoff that's moving through the woods in that area will, the velocity will be distributed by it going through the level spreader. So that's been added to the project. Um, and then we were also asked to update the lighting note that talked about, you know, the hours of operation for the lighting and we have changed that. And if you, um, we noted what it was in the letter, but if you want me to read that, um, I can. We changed the note to state that during the operating months, site lights will be turned on at dusk and will be turned off at the end of the day's activities, typically 9:00 PM, but no later than 11:00 PM. Um, and that's generally what we did and we were asked to do from the last meeting. So, um, what else? Um, you know, and we're eager to move the application forward clearly. And I understand that the board needs to go through their process. Just a reminder that in order for us to go to ZBA and get the variances and approvals we need from them, we need a neg deck from the planning board. I believe we went through all of that at the prior meeting, just reminding the board of that. Um, and, um, we are also, we've addressed all of the comments from DEP for our variance that we've received to date and they won't deem our application complete until we have an egg deck. So that's the only other thing I wanted to remind the board about. I don't know if there's anything you all want to ask me about, but sure questions will come up, right? As we go through the part three.
Great. Yeah. So, um, thank you. Um, Jan, do you want to review your memo?
Sure, our memo was, um, was on the lighter side. The applicant did a good job responding to all the comments. Did a good job preparing the part three. We didn't really have any comments on the part three, thought it was sufficient. One thing, uh, I'd like to absolutely try to maybe, um, advance to the extent that they can. Prior to making a secret determination, we'd like to get the feedback from the fire department. And I know that's out of the applicant's hands, but perhaps you can try to follow up on that with either the building inspector or the fire chief and see that we get a response for the next meeting.
Okay.
Like to see that, um, you know, for the secret determination. But I think the next step uh, would be, and I think that, you know, if the board's comfortable, I think you, you have the information available now uh, to make that determination, potentially your next meeting. So that, that would be the next step of the process.
Right. So I did review, um, the part three EAF and if anything, I think, um, you know, the, we could have, we could have been a bit stronger. Um, one point that I think was brought up last time that is that we have not, to my knowledge, had any kind of complaints by any of the neighbors. It's been a welcome and a good neighbor to the, to the people around it. And I think that's another indication that the, uh, you know, that sort of strengthens all of the items in the part three. So um, if, unless there are other questions, I guess what I would look for is a, is a, I guess we have to ask for, is it a motion or just consensus to get a neg deck to be prepared for September?
That would be a consensus. And the neg deck resolution would also indicate, you know, full adoption of the EAF, so.
Yeah, and, and I think as, as, um, Don indicated and as we've said, we, we need to get the neg deck done. I, I think after reviewing the EAF, I have no concerns with saying that this is a neg deck uh, application or an application that we can comfortably ask for a neg deck for. So, um, so by consensus, can I see thumbs up to, um, okay, everybody. So we will ask for neg deck to be prepared for September. I did have one question, I guess, for the applicant, and this is just as we think about going forward. The, the business plan that was provided is dated 2022 and it has a lot of dates that refer to this. Um, I'd just like for the record, uh, and, um, sort of to, to know that this is, is representative of what you would think the business plan would be in the future years. And perhaps, yeah, if you need to, to ask, um, about that, I mean, that would just be something that would be helpful to have for the next time through.
Okay, I, I'll confer with, um, with the club, but that is my understanding that it is.
It is.
Great, okay.
Thank you, John. John Assuma, club manager.
Thank you. So we do have, I think that's comfortable then for me. Um, so the, the other thing that we could do perhaps is, um, uh, we could talk about opening a public hearing, but we can't close it until after we get the ZBA, you know, um, so it would actually mean if we opened it in September, it was be very likely that we would continue it on. So I'm, I don't really feel a need to get it um, open that at this point, but I, I'd let, um, I'll, I'll let people kind of give their view. It would start the discussion, but we know we can't close it in September. So I, I'd sort of just as soon leave it until October. Yes, Bruce?
I, the one, given the applicant's desire to move this as quickly as possible, by opening it in September, it's an opportunity to hear comments that could be then addressed in October rather than opening it in October and then having it carry over still another month.
Jerome? You're muted. Sorry, Jerome.
Yeah, I concur with Bruce. Also, there's the reality of very few adjacent properties within striking distance that would be impacted and to begin with. And secondly, we, we stated at the very inception of this discussion about how well-received the property is and the, the operation is in the community. So I, I have no expectation scheduling in September.
Yeah, well, that's the reason why I do it in October because I agree with you. I don't think we're really going to get a big showing of, of people coming out for a public hearing. I think we probably wrap everything all up in October. And I, I agree with you. I just have the opposite approach that you do.
Yeah, I, I honestly don't know which would be more expedient. I don't really uh, expect to, I mean, we want to hear from the public, but I don't expect to hear anything that surprises us and requires, so I'm.
Yeah, how does our September agenda look?
Well, it's, it's pretty, it's got a few things on it. I mean, um.
Do you have any other hearings?
We do. We'll have the cell tower at Town Park.
So that's a cool location, cool location.
It's a renewal, we'll have a special use permit, ATC Tower.
Right.
A lot.
If we're, if we're not going to wrap it up until October, I think we could probably all do it in one night.
Chairman, can I chime in on this?
Of course.
Okay, so in our opinion, we would prefer to open the public hearing as soon as possible, address the comments as they come in at that time, so that, you know, we, we agree if there's any comments that we need to address, we'd rather do it for the October meeting and have it done. And then if nothing else comes up, we have, you know, hopefully no other comments to address at that time. So that would be our preference.
Okay, so, um, and, and I think we're kind of divided on it. So given that, I'm, I guess I would tend to go with what the applicant finds desirable. That will mean you probably have to show up for two meetings instead of one, but that's okay. Um, so it, does everyone agree then that, that we would, um, because it's a request of the applicant that we will open it in September? Okay. Um, so I think with that, that's, um, again, we have this, uh, dilemma and, and work with Kirsten who is now getting experienced at how to write a public notice that says, well, we might be in person, but then again, we might be by Zoom. So, um, and, and that will, that will be how it will be. Okay, anything else that we need to do on this tonight? Jan?
No.
I think we're okay. Okay. So with that, thank you. We will see you then, um, in September and, um, and again, we're, we'll continue to work to get this done as quickly as possible. Thank you.
And one, one other thing I just wanted to bring up in response to something Jan had said about the fire department and the building inspector, you know, after last month's meeting, we resubmitted everything we had provided to them, uh, you know, had, had submitted to the board because we received comments um, from the building department through the board. You know, we had responded to those comments through our response to the board. But after last month's meeting, we put together a package, submitted it directly to the building inspector and we followed up. Um, and we haven't heard back. So we will continue to follow up, but we have been reaching out and, you know, and haven't heard back yet. So, no, just wanted to follow up on that and that's all, that's it. So thank you.
Yes, maybe, maybe now the carnival is over, though. They'll be able to uh, give us some time. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, the next item on our agenda is calendar number 01-15 PB, calendar number 25-15 WP, calendar number 06-15 SW. This is, uh, Copia Garden Center at 475 Smith Ridge Road, South Salem, New York. And this is an application for a sketch plan review, site development for unfinished improvements to the existing Copia Garden Center and expansion of the existing use onto adjacent tax parcel. So last month, we reviewed this and we basically deferred consideration because of the violations on the adjacent parcel. And we understood that there were some pending court arrangements for that. So perhaps, Judd, you could give us an update on this, uh, the status of this situation?
Yep, thank you. Um, I have spoken with the town prosecutor, Greg Monteleone, about the status of the violations issued against Vista Market, but relating to the outdoor storage on that, uh, on those premises. If you recall, prior to the last meeting, Greg had reported that efforts were going to be made to relocate all of the outdoor storage prior to a court appearance that I believe occurred last week that has not occurred. Um, as a consequence, the next court date is August 29th. And, uh, I, I don't know the status of relocation efforts, but according to, um, the town prosecutor, at that point in time, the town intends to push forward for a hearing with regard to those violations for disposition and imposition of fines, which can accrue on a daily basis. So that, that's where we are. Same as last month.
Okay, so if I'm interpreting that right, we probably would want to wait to hear what happens, just like we did last month, wait and see.
I agree, because from, from a practical standpoint, uh, the outcome of, of, of that proceeding is going to, is going to bear upon what occurs with that storage and presumably it would be, I assume relocated to the, uh, to the property that's subject to the site plan application and is going to influence the site plan application. So I, I think we wait.
Okay, I know the applicant is on. Do you have any comments you want to make at this point?
I'm mute.
You're muted if you're like.
No, all we know is that Vista Market does have council working on it right now. And Agon Markets is meeting in September and whatever the council, I, I know that they're working, I know that, um, I believe it's Simone Petro Melis is representing Vista Market right now and working on, I guess, the proceedings with the courts and other town matters, I guess.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I think it makes sense to me to take our council's advice and, and put this on to the September agenda and see if we will have an update from there. If that's okay with everybody else on the board here. All right. Um, okay, so thank you. We will, we hope that that will move towards resolution quickly. Okay, the next item on our agenda is under lot line change. Okay, the next item on our agenda is under lot line change. Um, this is calendar number oh two dash twenty two PB, calendar number oh three dash twenty two WP, and calendar number oh two dash twenty two SW. This is the Hollander Autumn Inn residences at um, one fifty three and one fifty one Post Office Road um, in South Salem, New York. Um, and this is the application for a lot line change and some driveway work. So um, I'm not sure who might be on for the applicant.
Uh, it's myself and Bill Einhorn.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, give your name for the.
Sure. Uh, my name is Gregory Cacciopoli. I'm the engineer on the project from uh, Casio Engineering. Um, I also worked with Bill Einhorn, who's the uh, landscape architect on the project. And uh, I'm going to skip, share my screen uh, so I could jump in.
Right.
All right, does everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, so um, the purpose of the project is uh, to perform a, a lot realignment, a lot line realignment, and uh, provide a new curb cut for driveway access to one fifty three Post Office Road. So currently, this is a uh, current look at the lot. And um, the lot line separating one fifty three. So the lot line separating one fifty one from one fifty three is here. All right, and we are proposing to shift the existing lot line, which is demonstrated by the dash dot uh, transparent line here to, and shifting it over to give one fifty three Post Office Road, seven hundred and eighty two point five square feet. And then uh, we're giving back that seven hundred and eighty two point five square feet in this area of the lot to the owners of one fifty one. So uh, this is a net zero uh, lot area exchange, and uh, that's, that's the first portion of this application. Um, the second uh, portion of the application involves the proposed curb cut for the uh, driveway access for one fifty three Post Office Road. So, um, we, we propose to uh, have a driveway access off of Autumn Ridge Road instead of the current situation, which uh, entailed both property owners sharing driveway access off of Post Office Road. So both the owner of one fifty three, you know, let me uh, give you a better drawing of this. Here you go. So both, here's the driveway access off Post Office Road, both of the owners of uh, one fifty three and, I'm sorry, one fifty one and one fifty three, which is over here, have to access through this driveway. So in order to get rid of that, we're trying to create access for one fifty three off of Autumn Ridge Road. Now, uh, there are some wetlands nearby, which uh, were delineate, which were uh, delineated by Evans Associates on uh, May third, twenty twenty two. And uh, after they had flagged the locations of the wetland, they uh, the surveyor did go out there and uh, locate the flags. So that's what we translated to the drawing. And uh, the work will be performed within the wetland buffer. However, we did uh, come up with a mitig, wetland mitigation plan, uh, which was done by Bill Einhorn. Uh, and I guess I should uh, switch it to him so he can tell you about the uh, landscaping design.
Hey, let's see. Okay, you're still sharing, so let me.
I stopped.
Thanks. Okay, now everybody see this? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, so coming in off uh, Autumn Ridge, first, not to be repetitive, however, every proposed plant is a native wetland buffer plant. So as I'm going through, uh, just know that everything is, is a native species. So kind of coming in off Autumn Ridge, um, I just mixed in irises and uh, evergreen ferns, just as a low little uh, buffer adjacent to the driveway area. It is within the right of way, um, but I kept it very low, you know, fifteen inches or so. And driving around the neighborhood, uh, I saw a lot of people with a lot of low plantings kind of going up to the road area. Um, there are, we are removing a few uh, dead, dead and decaying trees. And as we come up, uh, a nice buffer between the driveways visual and physical buffer of American hollies and uh, again, ferns and uh, red sprite hollies along the driveway. And as we come up the drive, kind of flanked with uh, red buds and nine barks and uh, goat's beard and Solomon seal, um, just, again, a lot of, a lot of native shrubs and perennials. Uh, also added some viburnums along the way. And coming down the drive, uh, again, lots of uh, hundred and fifteen cinnamon ferns on one side. Uh, more cinnamon ferns, more viburnums on the other side. Um, so some good balance and repetition of plants, a lot of Solomon seal. And again, red, red bud for the trees and hollies for our screening. Um, this is all existing on the other property at this point. And uh, that's kind of what I came up with.
Okay, and I think um, did you do a calculation? Do, I think I remember seeing it of, of disturbance to.
Yes. Yeah, so area disturbance of wetland buffer thirty three twenty three. Um, we mitigated and gave thirty seven eighty one. So we're a little bit over the one to one ratio. On that.
Great. So Yan, perhaps you'd want to go through your memo?
Sure. The um, proposed action is a, an listed action under secret. So there is a secret obligation the planning board will have to undertake. Um, the applicant has submitted a um, short form EAF. And we have uh, some comments pertaining to that document as a comment for our memo. Uh, the approvals required are preliminary and final subdivision plat uh, for the lot line realignment and a wetland activity permit for the disturbance within the buffer associated with the driveway uh, relocation. Um, access onto Autumn Ridge requires a highway work permit from the town um, highway superintendent. Uh, we'll need to coordinate uh, with him regarding the access point and his um, preferences uh, for the driveway. Uh, there is a, an expedited um, process for lot line changes that um, don't result in a new building lot or result in a zoning non-conformity. Um, that allows you, the board to adjust the normal three-step subdivision application process and basically move um, combine um, preliminary and final uh, together uh, and waive the public hearing, uh, if you're so inclined. And I think based on my review that they would meet that criteria. However, I would recommend that you have the application um, referred to the building inspector for zoning conformance review to um, to um, ensure that that's the case. Uh, the application forms uh, were submitted and signed by uh, one of the two uh, owners. They'll need to be sm, submitted by both uh, property owners. Um, so all, all the application forms uh, need to be revised uh, to include uh, signatures and names of, of both parties. Uh, we had some comments on the short EAF. Um, there is some planting proposed in the right of way. Uh, the code does not allow for um, well, the mitigation offsite, or it doesn't prefer that to be the case. Um, and planting within the right of way requires a license agreement with the town board. Uh, there's also proposed uh, fragmites removal within the right of way. Uh, that's typically done um, by mechanical means or by herbicide treatment. So we needed some more information from the applicant on how they're going to manage the fragmites. And uh, if they are going to plant in the right of way, there does need to be an agreement for any uh, disturbance and planting uh, in the right of way. Uh, it may be more advantageous for them to find additional areas onsite to account for their mitigation. Uh, given the location of the property within the uh, New York City watershed, the installation of the new driveway, just want them to check with the DEP. Um, as they have provisions regarding impervious surfaces within a hundred feet of um, the DPO water course, um, the driveway may be exempt, but uh, would like clarification from the DP on that. So if you can court, the apple, coordinate with the DP. Uh, we need the deed uh, for um, yes, the uh, autumn or um, parcel. The Hollander parcel was uh, that deed was submitted, but not the other. Uh, sightline, um, sight distance and sightline profiles for the new entrance drive. Um, comment about the grading, um, and then just clarify the drainage uh, inlet locations on Autumn Ridge Road. Uh, that portion of the driveway is going to drain to Autumn Ridge. It's a pretty insignificant amount of, the net increase in impervious is pretty small. Um, it's under a couple hundred square feet. Um, if I, if I recall, but um, it will drain to the road. So we want to understand where those drainage inlets are and just clarify the locations and that uh, there's not going to be any uh, interference between the curb cut and the, the drainage in the street. But you know, um, I think this is the second time they s, they submitted the plans of uh, the, much clearer and I appreciate the time that went into preparing the plans and um, be happy to answer any questions.
Um, we did, or I did uh, follow up on the fragmites removal comment and put it on the plan. Not sure that you guys got a chance to, to see it.
No, they didn't see that yet, Bill. Um, we did address the comment. I, I just planned on following up to this meeting with, with the uh, revised plans, but yes, everything has been addressed.
Right, so we, it would just be cutting and pulling uh, mechanical control, no glycophase, phosphate uh, used in the area um, to remove the fragmites. Um, it actually, I believe, is a native fragmites and not the uh, introduced or invasive fragmites that's there. Uh, I never thought I'd be studying fragmites, but I spent a lot of time on it uh, this week. And uh, went out there and um, from my research, um, it might be a native fragmites, which is not quite as invasive. And it's about six or seven feet wide by about fifteen or twenty feet. So it's not a, not a big stand. Um, so it shouldn't be much of a problem to uh, get rid of that, that small area.
But that the earthwork will need to be um, permitted by, by the town.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
So actually, I had a question about that because I saw that you were planning to put lawn on top of that. Um, and again, I don't know whether and sorry, lawn on top of where the fragmites was going to be removed. Um, if you're sure it's native, I'm going to have to go take a look because I don't know that I've ever seen native fragmites either.
Yeah, I, it's, it's weird because they say that uh, and again, I, I did a lot of research on it, but there, the native one gets little spots on the, the columns, on the stems. And the uh, introduced or invasive one doesn't get that on the stems. And I went out there and I took pictures of the, the stems up close and they all had the little dots on them. So I was like, oh, I guess this might be a native. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but uh, it, it kind of covered some of the characteristics of the native uh, versus the uh, introduced fragmites.
Yeah, so, but in any case, I, I don't know, I mean, I know there's fragmites there. I don't know what's really along and whether there would be uh, whether any ground cover, or I know some people have started planting wildflowers and stuff, whether there would be anything that would be
um,
more attractive than a lawn that might.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, the, the rest or the balance of what's in through this area is basically just scrub and, and weeds, same on the other side. Um, so I, I could just do like a, a wildflower native mix. Um, that's fine.
I think we'd like to avoid mowing if possible.
Yeah, um.
I mean, you know, something low I was thinking about, you know, either, so that would be great. The other question I have, um, so obviously, both of these neighbors are in agreement of it. Have you had any discussions with the neighbor across the street from, I think there's an
Yes.
driveway sort of across the street, and then maybe the next one in from Post Office Road, just to see if they um, you know, would have any but just, well, I guess one to make them aware, and then second to see if they have any objections to this, or whether they would be fine with it. Um.
Uh, I haven't spoke to anybody. I don't know if Greg or Seth uh, Hollander, the owner, has.
Well, I think that.
No, I haven't either.
Okay. Yeah, maybe if you could stop screen sharing, we could see a little bit more about who's where unless.
Yeah, I, I, hi, this is uh, Seth Hollander. Thank you. Um, I have discussed this with uh, the neighbor up Autumn Ridge and, and they seemed quite comfortable with it. We have not discussed it uh, with the neighbor across the street.
So I mean, typically, we, we have public hearings, you know, to kind of inform people as well as to hear their concerns. So I think it would be very helpful um, in our discussion of whether we um, wanted to require a public hearing for this to have some um, some sense of uh, support or at least not an objection from the neighbors. So if they could send a quick email to Kirsten, planning@lewisburg.gov.com, that would be um, helpful. I, I do think, so again, if you could stop screen sharing so we could see everyone, I think the next step, one of them, um, well, unless anybody has any questions about this, I look for consensus to refer this to the building inspector, just to make sure we're clean. So and to, everybody moved. Oh, I got them. Okay, so, so Kirsten, we will refer this um, to the building inspector. Um, I guess the question um, would be uh, do we want to think about a public hearing or think about asking for um, a resolution on this? I, you know, it um, looking to see what, what people think about this. Um, it could have some small impact on the neighbors on on Autumn Ridge, but it's not like there's going to be the, the same cars that were going out on the post office are now going to be going out on the Autumn Ridge around the corner. So I, I don't know if there's a.
If, if, if there can be some letters or acquiescence by, you know, touch base with, I think that would be sufficient to waive the public hearing. Because there's not that many people that are going to be affected by it.
Okay, anyone else?
Seth, do you have a problem with uh, reaching out to uh, the, the adjacent neighbors and just getting either a letter or having them send an email to Kirsten? Is that feasible? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Uh, I, I assume so. Again, I discussed it with one neighbor. Um, I haven't with the other, but I, I would note that uh, while of course there could be some change with the change in driveway, the neighbor up one fifty three is pretty far away. While of course there could be some change with the changing driveway, the neighbor up one fifty-three is pretty far away. From where our new driveway would be and the neighbor across the street is not directly across the street. And as you have pointed out, that intersection does get a fair amount of traffic. So I. I would, I would hazard to guess that there's really no material change in in traffic flow and both of those driveways are. Again, not, it's not fifty feet. They're they're both pretty far away from where the new driveway would be.
I can share my screen to give you a visual. I mean, so. Here's one fifty-three post office road. Here's one fifty-one. This is the current access that they share. We would propose a curb cut on Autumn Ridge around here. The closest driveway on Autumn Ridge is. This home right here. Which is a pretty. Significant distance away. So so would you say just speaking to these people would be sufficient?
I think to me, it seems it sounds like you've already talked to the one further in from post office road on the same side of the road. You got both across the street and. And further, the one to the, I guess that's north. Oh, right, yeah, that one. Yep, so. And it sounded like I thought Seth had said he had already spoken to that person. So I think if we got. Because everybody else, you're you're right, is pretty. Pretty far away. I that would make me feel pretty comfortable that that. We wouldn't surprise anybody with it or, you know, anyone would be apt to be upset by this.
Yeah, if this were a commercial property, you know, it might be some concern, but. This is a residential property and, you know, there's not any significant. Traffic in and out unless you have some kind of operation we don't know about.
Okay, so. We'll refer this to the building inspector. Should we ask for? A resolution for next month and just anticipating that we will get nothing. Surprising back from the building inspector and that we will be able to hear from those two neighbors.
Well, if I may, the wetland permit requires a public hearing.
So then either way.
So should we set a public hearing for next month or do we want to wait until the we hear back from the building inspector?
I'd say next month.
Yeah, I think we could set it and if worse comes to worse, we. We would have to leave it open, but hopefully we would be able to move forward.
Yeah, because the building inspector would 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 provide feedback on the zoning and the bulk regulations and setbacks, which. Would just change a dimension on the plan or a number on the table, so. I I don't think it'd be significant to the actual wetland or driveway itself.
Right, okay.
Have you have you met with the highway superintendent?
We did, but this was about a year back and I actually emailed him about it and he said he has no issues with the actual curb cut on Autumn Ridge Road. So that was kind of gave us confidence to move forward, but it's been a while since we've reconnected. So I will absolutely do so before the public hearing even to just. Provide some feedback from him.
And do we need a license agreement before we? Approve this or what? You know, with the town, if they're doing something in that.
That's been done as a condition in the past.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So I'm not sure. We we've got consensus to go to a public hearing. Do we have consensus to ask for a resolution in the event that the? The public hearing is uneventful? Okay, that looks like it. Okay.
I have one question.
Sure.
So the things in the right of way, do we? Are we just going to to draft a license agreement and and who would review and and give us that authorization? To plant in the right of way?
You 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 would have to. Propose that planting and the frag mighties removal to the town board and. Work with their council to develop a license agreement to install and maintain that material within the right of way. Alternatively, you can relocate. The plantings onto the subject parcel and avoid that.
Then what would be, what would be in that area? Would you just leave all the the scrub that's there now?
Well, it could be lawn, I suppose.
I mean. I don't know what the, so it sounded like you had excess mitigation. I don't know if you cut that piece out if you're still. Above the one to one.
It would be close. It's like three or three to four hundred square feet over.
Yeah, you might have to do more on the lot. So, yeah, but.
It's up, yeah, I mean, it's up to the applicant how they want to proceed with that, I suppose, but. Preferably. Mitigation on the subject property, the code. Kind of pushes you in that direction to have the mitigation on the on the property itself, not offsite.
But I I guess my question is, when that driveway is being constructed, there will be disturbance on.
Yeah, that's that's covered in the the highway work permit with the. You know, with the highway superintendent, the disturbance, you know, usually you have a little area that, you know. You restored a lawn, but. Not not plantings, not frag mighty removal. That's something a little bit more significant that we've typically handled with a license agreement, but. The disturbance associated with the driveway gets covered.
But it's not lawn now, so. You know, it's just scrub and weeds. So it's not like restoring to lawn because it's not lawn now.
I understand, but you're going to typically have a great, like if you were to create a new driveway on a vacant lot, you're going to have. Grading and disturbance in the right of way and that's going to get. Restored. Typically, it's lawn.
But Yan, the driveway is not an issue. That can be licensed without any any issue. And it seems to me the planting is part of is in context of the rest of the planning that's with the driveway, which would enhance the overall. Finish product. Seems to me the town.
That's fine. It just needs to be handled by a license agreement.
Yeah, seems to me they would consider that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just another step and another and another, you know, board to deal with another administrative entity, so. Yeah, your choice.
Right, so we'll speak about that and then we'll come back to the next meeting with or without it based on our findings.
Okay. And again, we'll set up a public hearing and. Just to restate what I said before, currently. The emergency authorization only goes through the middle of September, but not to our meeting, so. We'll set up the public hearing as if we are meeting in person, but with the, if the. Emergency declaration gets extended, we would go. To as zoom as we're at today. Okay, any other questions on this? All right, we'll see you in September.
Thank you very much.
Janet, Jen, I have to drop out. I have to drop out right now from the meeting. It's great. I have to drop out. I have to take care of something for tomorrow, so I will see you all in September. Sorry, everybody.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. I'm sure you've got the time on that. Kirsten, all right, so the next item on our agenda is calendar number oh eight dash twenty-two PB. This is the Maguire residence on eight oh one, Route thirty-five and Cross River in New York, and this is also an application for a lot line change.
Two in one night?
Yes, hello.
Thank you for your time, guys. I know this is running long. My name is Michelle McGuire. I'm here with my husband Dennis McGuire and we have our engineer Peter Gregory is on as well. And I am new to this, so I don't really know what I'm doing, but Peter can answer any questions we want to answer. And I'll let you guys take charge.
Well, I can kind of walk everyone through it. Michelle owns the property at eight oh one Old Post Road. There it consists of two parcels. They're referred to as tax lot number five. And tax lot number six. They are both separate parcels. What we're looking to do tonight is to adjust the property line, the common line between parcel five and six. To accommodate for an addition that's being proposed to the existing home at eight oh one. There aren't any plans to develop parcel six. We did come up with a conceptual layout to demonstrate zoning compliance. And to take a look at. A potential sewage disposal system areas as well as a well, access off of Route thirty-five into the site. And I can just show that. This is our parcel. So we're looking to amend. The or adjust the lot line between five and six. Shifting it over slightly, giving about a tenth of an acre over to parcel six. Yeah, parcel five, that would allow to construct the addition, which would be probably on the. It's going to be on the east side of the house and still be able to maintain the required side yard separation. Distance to the property line. We have been to the Westchester County Health Department for a new septic system at eight oh one on developed parcel. Our next step would be to get the health department involved. To determine that the area that we're indicating as the proposed area on tax lot six. Is a viable area. Soils in this area have been historically very good. We don't anticipate. Any problems with, you know, dealing with the health department for the well or the septic. We are working with a surveyor right now who helped us develop our. Final map and our plat, which we would also submit for review. We have had an opportunity to review through the memo. We don't have any concerns or issues with anything that's has been. Discussed and we are prepared to begin to address these comments and get back in, you know, before the board and the health department.
Okay, so just to be clear, what you're actually asking for right now, though, is just the lot line change, not for the new. Building.
That's correct.
Okay.
There there aren't any plans or intentions to develop the other parcel.
All we're really trying to demonstrate is that it's still a viable lot and therefore we don't want to merge the two pieces. So that we have the right, if at some point in the future, we want to develop lot six. But there's no intention to do so at this point.
Okay. Yan, do you want to comment on your memo?
Yeah, sure, it's. Again, I'm on for subdivision preliminary and final subdivision approval for a lot line realignment. It's an enlisted action under SEGRA. Be looking for the short environmental assessment form. Our our main comments really were just. When you're preparing the final subdivision plat by the surveyor, that that can just show the bulk zoning table, the lot line. Or the zoning setbacks, the septics and the wells and the existing conditions. You can remove the. The proposed addition. And the future development, if any, on lot six. That can be shown on maybe like an integrated plot plan that people would prepare. Just so there's no. Provide clarity that there's nothing really proposed on those lots and this is this is being being shown for for zoning compliance. In the future.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are you wanting us to just have the? Septic shown for the lot five with the existing house? Not for lot six where there isn't anything.
I think the health department might make you show the septic for lot six. So I'm thinking a septic and well. For a lot six with zoning setbacks and then. Your existing conditions and the proposed septic on lot five. But like the. You know, future residents and the pool and your addition, that could be showed on like an integrated plot plan. And, you know, the the planning board actually. Since you have no wetlands on or near the property. There's no need or jurisdiction for the board to review the developments of lot six and and lot five. Those will be kind of administered administratively with building permits. If and when you decide to develop them, so really just dealing with a lot line change and and. Demonstrating, as you mentioned. The potential future development of lot six and obviously your future plans for lot five. It looked fine. I I would recommend referring it to the the building inspector. I discussed with Pete, you know, there's usually we're looking at like buildable area calculations and buildable area. Boundaries and these these parcels really don't have any slopes on them. There's no wetlands, so. I'm going to ask Pete just to note it on the plan, but it's basically both lots are entirely. Quote unquote, buildable per the zoning code. So it's pretty, pretty straightforward. Really have a whole lot of comments on it.
Okay, so what? I guess that I heard. Refer to the building inspector, so we do that by consensus, so. Okay, we got that. You're okay, Bruce, I'm assuming with Bernie. Okay, so we'll refer it to the building inspector and then. Based on what you said. I think on this one, we can waive the public hearing. And. Should, so can we?
Yeah, I would. I would wait until you get the building department. I think that's entirely possible. I'd wait to get the building department's letter. There are no wetlands to be concerned about. If you get a letter back from the building inspector saying they're zoning compliant, then. You'd be able to waive the public hearing because you'd know that there it's not creating a zoning nonconformity. So I think you can. Potentially set this up for a resolution. I just wouldn't waive the public hearing yet.
Okay, so we could ask for a resolution. Subject to. Adequate response to your comments and and we'll see what happens with with the building inspector.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yan, would the would the resolution require satisfying health department? As part of the final as well?
Well, yes, prior to the signing of the plat. I would imagine they're going to be signed in the plat. They're going to have you.
But that would be. Yeah, that would be a condition. That doesn't stop us from doing the resolution. It becomes a condition of the resolution.
Correct, okay.
Okay. Anything else? So we will. See you in September and hope that we will have a clean letter from the building inspector on this.
When is the due date for the pieces that we owe you to be on the meeting for September?
If I have this right, it's August thirtieth. And our meeting is September. Twenty.
And Jan and Yan, are are we looking to have a resolution for September in anticipation of an all clear from the building inspector?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, okay.
I think so. I mean. Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to clarify, okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you very much.
Good night. Moving through this, but. More to go. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a wetland permit review. This is calendar number twenty-nine dash twenty-one WP. Calendar number oh three dash twenty. WV. This is the Shilki Residence, Three Beaver Pond. In South Salem, New York, and it's an application for the remediation of wetlands. And we have. I think seen them in. And last month, and I think Yan has been out. To see the. The work that's been done there. So maybe Yan, if you want to. Give us a report.
I was out to inspect the property. Well, first I went out, it was like a preconstruction meeting. A month or so ago. a a month or so ago um and viewed the property and then uh was just called back last week to inspect all the plantings. Um, and and everything's been installed. Um, the plantings are are in good shape. They're being uh they're being constantly irrigated. That's been a little bit of a struggle, but um they they've done everything that they were asked to do. I did give them a little bit of um latitude on the conservation seed mix that um is to be installed, just because they it's just not the time of the year to do it. Um, they did mulch in and around these the shrubs in the trees, and we talked about uh applying that seed mix in the fall. Um. So was happy with what I saw. I'm going to prepare a wetland certificate of compliance. Um, and I think the board should request um in an itemized list of their expenses uh to date, so you can get us an idea of um mitigation costs. All all is in good shape.
Great, thank you. So um Garrett, would you be, do you think you'd be able to gather up um expenses for us?
Yeah, of course, definitely.
To a meeting, that would be great.
Okay, for the what for the next meeting or just uh send it all over?
Yeah, for the um, yeah, send it prior to the meeting would be helpful. Um. And I think we just talked about August thirtieth as a great day, target date to get all that by.
Okay, no problem.
Um, it sounds like there's really been good progress here. So then we will um discuss this in September and hopefully close it out at that point.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions on this? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye, guys.
Bye. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion item. It is um calendar number twelve dash twenty-two PB. This is Villas at Vista at nine twenty Oak Ridge Commons in South Salem, New York. And this is not really an application, but a discussion and preliminary application for construction of eighteen additional housing units. And we have
I think. Phil Klein is here. Hi, everybody again.
Hi.
Um, I'm going to have Bobby Bird actually go through this with you somewhat quickly. Basically, same idea as what we were doing over at the heights, but this time we would be doing site-related work and be adding a building to that area, taking what what was the fitness center approved for a fitness center and changing it to residential housing, which we believe is a much better use, less traffic, less water. So Bob, you can go if you're here somewhere.
Sure. May I share the screen?
Go ahead, please.
Ah, come on. Well, I'm trying. Doesn't seem to be going. I'm not getting the second share. I apologize. There we go. Okay. Apologize for the delay. Um, the uh this is the back of the of the site of the west side of the site near the uh near the pond or near the condos. Uh, the nine B building that we were in for in uh before you a few months ago is this building right here, except that we included uh uh the space between the nine A and the nine B building. And when this was originally built, this was built as two warehouse buildings with about ten foot space in between. Uh, uh subsequently, the space got filled in. That spaces is now the kitchen and the bathroom area of the heights. So what we're proposing now is to actually separate these two buildings, separate the A building from the B building, remove that connection. Uh, the uh four units that were previously approved for the uh for the main floor um would still remain four units, although they'd be a little bit smaller. We're now proposing that the fitness center, which was in the lower level of this building, uh we add two new units. Now, this um this building is exposed on the west side, this side uh only. It's on on grade on on the upper side, on the uh eastern side. So the two units would really be just on the exposed side, and then mechanical space would be in in the uh in the back of it. Uh, then we're also proposing to put six units uh in the A building. Now, it's not quite large enough, so we put a little addition on it here as well. Uh, then we're we're proposing six townhouse units um uh in this location. Now, the drawing that was submitted to you uh also showed four units uh located back in this area. We're now eliminating those four units uh with the parking lot that was associated with that. We're not proposing that work to be done. So it's a total of uh of eighteen units. We're talking about the original four that were approved, then two below, six units and six units here. So a total of eighteen units, including the four that we were previously approved. Now, uh, the there was a parking lot that was here that or there is a parking lot that it's here that we're proposing to be eliminated. There was a second side of this parking lot here that we're proposing also to be eliminated.
Okay, I'm not seeing your cursor. I don't know if um.
You're not seeing that cursor?
I I think we're seeing the western most part, and I think you might have moved more towards where where are you dealing with right now?
Okay, where the where the um four uh where the six new units are being added.
Yes.
Next to Oak Ridge uh Drive.
Right.
There was, there is an existing parking lot there that we're now proposing to be removed.
Uh, okay.
Now, these units, these six units will have garages, so we have driveways leading up to those six units.
Okay.
Um, on the opposite side of the of the site, uh, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but it's on that a lot now. Uh, we're, it's a two-sided parking lot currently, and we're proposing to eliminate one side of the parking and and putting green space in. That includes includes this area that is uh next to the uh uh the daycare building as well as next to the building A. Proposing to eliminate those spaces and instead uh just put green space in there. Further, we're um we're proposing to uh change the entrance to the daycare parking lot from opposite the residential units to to coming off of Oak Ridge Drive and removing again another row of parking spaces and uh just adding green space there. So we're in this proposal, we're adding nine thousand four hundred square feet of of uh of additional uh green space. So that's a a positive for the site. We think uh uh you know, adding adding about three, three or four percent of the site back to green space, where we're adding, you know, very little uh additional paving than than what was there previously.
Okay, um. I'll just say for me, um it would help to have a little more sense. I know this is very preliminary of of how this fits in into the whole thing. So where the I know there's, I think, apartments to the guess that would be north, and there's something over towards the pond further west and, you know, I don't, I don't.
And to the south is the is the Laurel Ridge.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think I think it would help be helpful to see that. I'd also like, I think it's building seven that's currently vacant. Is there any plans to incorporate anything on that at this point?
Phil, you're you're muted.
My screen changed, so I couldn't figure it out. Um, there's, there are no plans at this point. We do, I mean, there's somebody that's looking at that space, but I was really always hoping that the daycare would actually take that. But there is nothing at this point. You know, as we go further with this, I don't want to have something that close, the the daycare playground behind. You know, so I'm not, I wouldn't do anything with 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 any units over there, but you know, maybe we can work something in with landscaping and, you know, whatever.
So I know this is just preliminary discussion, but I think one of the things that before we have any kind of real discussion on this, it and and certainly knowing about the problems currently happening with um the water and sewer there. No, I'm sorry. It's probably water. That's the problem, that there was a a shortage of supply during the drought here. Um.
That was actually an irrigation problem that the just the irrigation was being used specifically at the townhomes was just over the top. We're working on that now. They they lowered the irrigation significantly and the usage is way down.
Okay.
So we will show that to you. I've been working with the with the people at the water plant to resolve that, that the usage is way down.
Good. Um, but I think I think that would be one of our concerns, at least one of my concerns. So I think maybe um what we should do is before we really get into this at all, see whether or not you know, um, the town board, which is really the authority for both the water and the sewage on this, would be amenable to you know, this kind of use. Um.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
So um okay, maybe if you could stop screen sharing, because I'm only seeing a few now.
Oh.
Um, maybe. So I think I think that would be the first thing. I mean, I think we would send a letter saying, hey, this doesn't mean that we are either in agreement with the concept or with the number or the location or anything, but we just want to know about uh would the town board um agree to the addition of um these units. I guess the question I don't really have, I mean, do you have a sense of how many bedrooms you're putting in each one? So.
I would like to do, I would like to do the three bedrooms, and I think what we sent in showed that. Bob, do you have the number for the fourteen?
Yeah, it's a total of fifty-four uh bedrooms. It's uh sixteen uh three-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units. Uh, but again, that includes the twelve that was previously approved.
Right, four, four three-bedrooms were previously approved.
Right, that includes the ones that were previously approved. So um, you know, when you compare the the water use of these fifty-four bedrooms um compared to the heights and the fitness center that were there, we're, you know, we're using less than half of the amount of water that was uh allocated to those two spaces. So this is again a net positive for the water water district.
Well, I I I think the I the first stop is the town board, and and I'd suggest, obviously, everybody seems to think that's the appropriate course here, and I I my my suggestion is for the applicant to make the direct approach to the town board rather than the planning board writing. We don't even have an application in front of us. Um. So just as they requested informal dialogue with us, I think it's incumbent on them to to make the approach to the town board rather than um the planning board soliciting that kind of a response. We we don't have an application.
We did submit an application.
We have a preliminary.
I have no problem going directly to the town board if that's the way to do this. I mean, we really were coming to you for you to advise us to go to the town board, so if we.
Yeah, and I'm saying rather than just do so directly.
Okay. Bob, do you have a problem with that?
No, not at all.
That's that's fine.
Yeah, and you know, obviously, um I think that's that's a that's a kind of critical first step. I I um I would wonder if you could, I mean, when I looked at it, if you want some feedback, I'm I would obviously prefer to have things out of the buffer than in, you know, if there's a way, those look like long driveways, if you could pull them a little bit back. But I mean, those are details that we would get in, and I think the first uh sort of hurdle to get through before we get into more discussions is, you know, is there water and sewer availability for this? Go ahead, John.
Well, aside from that question, which I think is pivotal, and and the town board has to address that, uh, there is the question of of suitability and, you know, is this is this an appropriate use of that uh of that land? What does the density feel like? You know, is there green, is there an improvement in green space or, you know, the things that have been brought up to us here today? Uh, is it appropriate for us to uh to comment on that as they go forward with the with the town board? I think the town might well, I if they're dealing with just the water, they they're not going to bring up the issue of suitability or design. Suitability, but would it help to uh for us to comment on that?
Uh, how familiar are you with this site itself? I mean, it's like, well, I know Jerry, you are, you play tennis there, right? So.
Yeah, I'm not that. I mean, that's where I was kind of, I was trying to place this in. What's T, you know, we know that this looks like a, you know, an L-shaped parcel, but I know that it sits in the middle of a lot of other stuff, and I did, you know, if I looked at it from um, you know, map, Google Maps, but it doesn't give me quite the same as how does this lay out against what exists there. So I mean, that.
The way the commercial space was set up to begin with, the the commercial space should have been in the front. That should have been all residential in the back. If you come out and take a look, I think you would agree with that. First, I'd love to show you the townhomes, the beautiful thing that we put together that took us how many years, but um, I think it'll give you a good idea of what we're looking at here and then what's back there. I mean, there needs to be, thi- this would improve the whole the buffer area from the between the condos and the shopping center as well. And there's a lot that can be done that's really going to improve this property.
Yeah, and I think what what you showed us is different than what had been submitted. So I think one of the things to to make sure is that if I'm right, right?
That's fair.
Yeah, because we eliminated those.
And and get that to Kirsten, um, because I was trying to follow around some of it, and um, yeah, I I pulled up the other the other maps, but I think um, so I think we I I think the first hurdle, I mean, then we can get into a little bit more of this, but again, um and and I obviously people may maybe many of you have spent more time there than I have, but I'm not that familiar with the space. Um, I assume because it's sort of all done now. Is there any problem with going and driving around and just kind of looking at?
No, please. I mean, I can, I can I can, if you'd like, I'd be happy to show you, but no, you can, you can go through the property, take a look at the townhomes. Um, see wh- where the shopping center is situated. Part of the shopping center does go into the pond area over there. So it goes down. It's all sitting up on a on a parking lot. When you see that green there, you you'll get a good good feel just by driving around there.
Okay, good. So this was supposed to be, um, it was listed as a discussion. Do you want more? Uh, did you get what you want from us tonight?
Well, I think I think right, going to the town board is correct. I'd love to, please take a look, suggestions. You know, when we come back to you, we're willing to try to beautify this area. You know, the commercial doesn't work in the back residential will, and we're as a right for the multifamily, so.
Great.
And Phil, you're going to be working with the town board on demonstrating adequate capacity, right?
Correct. I mean, you you just did an engineering report showing fifty-three thousand gallons that was done for the health department. Then they had this hiccup with the irrigation, which, yes, I'm working with them on that. And um, again, the numbers have come down. They were in the mid forties, fifties. mid-forties, fifties after they realized it was an irrigation problem.
So that was irrigation at, at the new townhomes?
It was really both. They're, they're in Cona Valley. There's no irrigation at the, at the condos or the shopping center. And there would be no irrigation in what I'm proposing here.
Okay.
And, and I just literally got the numbers from them for, I, I foiled the numbers for the first two quarters of two thousand twenty-two, just put them on a spreadsheet and some of the numbers just jump out of you, out at you. There, there's a, there's a difference between what they, what they're billing and what the, what's coming out of the wells. So that's really what started this whole thing. I did it for two thousand twenty-one. And again, you can see the irrigation numbers, just how dramatic they are.
Okay. All right. So when you said irrigation, I was thinking Conant Valley, but.
Well, it is. It's Cona Valley also. It's a combination of both things. So a, a number of the Conant Valley units are on, have a separate meter. O- o- others don't, but if you look at the usage for the first quarter and fourth quarter compared to the middle two quarters, you know, you, you know exactly what the numbers are. So.
Okay. Well, that's really, I mean, it's getting the town board, go ahead on that, that would be.
Yeah, no, no, I, again, we are doing that.
Yeah. And we're, I'm sure we will hear from the public if, if it goes forward on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on this that, that you want from us right now?
No, I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine. Thank you.
Good. Okay.
Thanks for your time.
All right. Bye-bye, everybody. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is calendar number oh five dash twenty-two PB. This is the Borough Cafe at eight seventy-three Route thirty-five in Cross River, New York. So we as a board approved a resolution in June on this and we were really silent on alcohol use. And we now understand the cafe has, has applied for a liquor license. So I think part of the reason to just bring this up is to inform the community. This was not part of our discussion. Well, actually, when, when we discussed it, we were told that there wasn't going to be an, an alcohol on site. I think we are now seeing that there is a application for a liquor license that has been sent in or submitted. So I think this is more almost to explain to the, the community that we, that our resolution was really silent on it and that we did not know about it at the time when this went through. I see John, you're on. Do you?
Yeah. How you guys doing?
Hi.
Yeah. So we, we had talked about it. We weren't sure what we were going to do and we decided we wanted to do it. We're not going for a full liquor license. We're going for a wine and beer. We didn't, we're not, that is not happening. We're not serving liquor at all. We, my father-in-law owns Crabtree's Kittle House and they have a big wine cellar. And we just got to talking to him and you know, we were interested in doing it. There was a wine cellar in the building already from a long, long time ago. So we didn't, you know, didn't mean anything by it, you know, totally cool talking to you guys about it. It was just something that came up after the fact. And that's really it. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'm more than willing to, you know, talk to you guys about it.
So I guess one of the things that springs to my mind is, do you see this being more for the special events or kind of an offering that you have all the time there?
No, definitely an offering we want to have. You know, we don't have a kitchen. We want to keep it very simple. You know, one or two beers on tap and just, you know, have a, you know, have a, have lunch, have a beer, you know. Very, very low-key. You know, not, nothing, nothing crazy.
John, I, I guess my, my problem or issue was that I was more under the impression that we were approving a, like a coffee shop, because that's how it was presented. And I think it was clear that there wasn't going to be any liquor. And also your hours are end at five, I believe.
Yep.
So it's, how, um, how often do you think you're going to have these special events?
Not very often. Maybe a couple a year.
So it won't be past the five o'clock time period?
No, 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 no. No. We're, we're, we, you know, Bachu is our neighbor and we have an agreement with them and we've been talking to them. I do not want to be open past five. That is not in our business plan. You know, like, I know a bunch of cafes around here that have beer and wine. So we've been going to a few of them and seeing the crowd and seeing what it's like. And it's actually very lovely and, you know.
Do they usually have them on tap? I mean, you're going to have on tap?
Nah, I've seen them that have, you know, just to have one or two.
Could you, could you cite one that, as an example that we could put? Because I don't know of any that serve beer and wine, if they're coffee houses.
Hayfields does in North Salem.
Well, they're a restaurant. I mean.
I'm sure I could come up with a couple others. I just don't off the top of my head.
They're a restaurant. I mean, they're not a coffee house per se.
I mean, it's, it's Hayfields Cafe and Market and it's not, I wouldn't say they're a full-blown restaurant. You know, they serve breakfast and lunch. They closed for, they don't serve dinner. It's kind of very similar to us. Yeah.
And to be honest, I mean, I think the way we, the, the way we approved it was under a restaurant category, not, not under, I don't think the town code has a cafe category. So, you know, I, I think this was really just to make sure that, you know, we, we kind of got a better feeling from you about what.
Yeah, we're, well, listen, we're trying to keep this very, very classy. You know, not, again, this wasn't supposed to be anything malicious. This was something we just thought would fit well with us and with our connections and something that I think the community is missing, you know, a place to relax and hang out, you know, meet a friend. You know, it's something that me and my business partner always wish we had here. You know, we've lived here our whole lives and you know, that's what we wanted to bring to the table.
Yeah. And, and again, I think this is sort of our, our due diligence to tell the community, all right, we've, you know, we didn't discuss this and here's now it's open to the community. They see what's going on and, and I, I thank you for, for telling us your plans. I don't know. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? I mean, I think we all want to see you succeed. And I understand that the business, what, what, how exactly you do this might change as it, as you get more experienced or you see what people want. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Bruce, go ahead.
Janet, I, I do believe that, as John explained, that this is something that we're seeing more and more of as being desirable to have. I'm very familiar with Hayfields and how they kind of morphed into being the establishment that they are. I think the thing for me that changes it, the, the perspective on this more than anything else is the hours of operation. So if John is, is saying that, you know, they're sticking to the hours of operation that they had originally outlined for us, I see that this modification is something that is, is not troublesome to me.
Thank you.
And those hours of operation are, are a condition of the approval. And another point, although there were discussions regarding alcohol sales during the course of the application, this particular use, there is no, there's no prohibition from a use perspective under the town code with regard to this type of use that would prohibit the sale of alcohol.
Okay. Yeah, I, I suspect that we might've had some different comments. You know, if, if we had known this upfront, but I think I, I don't really, as, as Judd just said, it's a, it's a, it's a permitted use. So I think we're, we're set. But again, I think part of this is just to let the public know that this is now part of the plan. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from anyone here? Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you, guys. Have a great one.
Okay.
Bye.
The next discussion item is to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan. So the, the comprehensive plan, and, and again, we have a great representative in Charlene who's on the steering committee. But they have started to call in the chairs of the ZBA, ACCARC and me to attend some sort of regularly scheduled meetings. They were going to be monthly. Now I think we're skipping September, but so I've been invited to them. I can report back as you wish. I think right now it's still very much in exploring and setting up plans for community outreach, setting up plans to even figure out how the members of the town like to get contacted. What's the best vehicle for that? But one of the things that I did hear recently from the consultants who are working on this, which is MPV, they would like to interview our board. And it's really about zoning laws, about things that we see as issues or things we might want to change. You know, as I even look at tonight's meeting, I might say, you know, maybe we need to be a little bit more at ease about things like EV chargers in commercial locations, because you know, that's something I think many people are going to want to see. You know, we might ask to not have to ping pong back and forth with performance bonds. We might say, you know, after a swimming pool gets to a certain size or a, any kind of pool gets to a certain size, it might have to come before us. Or there might be limits, I mean, or even that they need covers on them, you know, that keep the heat in if you're going to have a heated pool. So I'm kind of thinking of things that we might want to talk to the, the consultants about and say, we'd like to see that better, that, that happen. They would like to interview us about this. I mean, and we need a little time to think about it, but I guess the first question is, do you want to have that at a regularly scheduled meeting? Or do you want to set up a separate meeting for this? I'm thinking at a regularly scheduled meeting because I hope it wouldn't go that long, but we have some pretty chack-a-block meetings coming up. So, I mean, we could aim for maybe October or September and see how, I just, I don't know.
I would say a special meeting, maybe a more informal meeting. Coffee and cake.
At your house, Jerome?
Zoom, coffee and cake. Well, no, I mean, this would, with this, if we did a special, Judd, I assume we'd have to be.
You'd have to comply with the open meeting slot, either if we're permitted to do it virtually, we do it virtually, or we do it in person.
But we'd have to notice it and everything. It would be.
Yeah, you'd have to notice. Yeah, yeah.
All this, all the normal stuff. So, do we want to try to set up a time and date?
I think a special meeting, I agree with Jerome, a special meeting probably would be the best. Because then otherwise that if we do it before a regularly scheduled meeting, we're going to have like an hour and a half or an hour and then go into a very, very long meeting and end at like, you know, eleven.
Right. Or try to do it after a meeting. I mean, our meetings, I mean, I'm hoping we'll get done by ten thirty tonight, but this is still, we're.
I hope so, yeah.
And I will not be ready for another meeting at ten thirty.
So.
Even if it's coffee and cake.
Oh, it has to be coffee, cake and maybe some wine.
Yeah, right. Well, then.
So the question I have is, are these issues that you're, they're expecting us to bring to the table? Or will they develop a questionnaire? Or do they have a questionnaire? For the consultants?
I don't believe they have a questionnaire. I think they're coming to look for, they, they are starting down their kind of, I'm forgetting the term of art, but it's like, it's like existing conditions. So they're starting down that. They want to know what we see as, as the impediments or opportunities. I mean, the other thing, you know, solar panels in the front yard. Well, okay, if they can't be seen from the road and they can't be, I mean, maybe there's some things where we could say, yeah, you can have solar pit. So there, I, I think there's a number of things that we could say we might want to have looked at. And they will, they will go through the plan. But then at the end, they are actually charged with coming up with a new, a new set of zoning codes that, that the town would then adopt. So this is our time to get in things that we might feel would be helpful.
You know, having, maybe like having a listing of all our open space and easements and et cetera, because, you know, we, as you said before, we don't have a generalized place for those. Judd, would you be able to help us with, you know, issues that have come up like on a regular basis?
Yeah, be happy to. Yeah.
So, and, and Jan might have some things to put in too. I mean, that he's just had to deal with all along.
Perhaps, yeah, Jan and I, maybe Charlene, I mean, we could just chat ahead of, ahead of time and set kind of an agenda or have kind of a checklist.
Yeah. So do we want to try to set a meeting up tonight? I mean, we could do, um, September twenty-seventh is Rosh Hashanah. So maybe, I don't know, September thirteenth, October, what have we got going on? October eleventh? I'm sticking to Tuesdays just because I'm assuming that those are easier.
I think, yeah.
Janet, if, if you're looking for me to be in the meeting, there's not a two, another Tuesday that works for me. I'm committed every Tuesday night.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking that, that maybe you can, I, I don't know. I don't, I hate to drag you out for another night, but I'm thinking if, if you gave us some things that you know that we've dealt with all the time. And I don't know whether, I think we did at one point deal with generators in the wetland or, you know, I mean, there, there are things that, I'm sure you see all the time that we could do a little bit better. I don't know.
That's true. Usually, you know, recommendations in a comprehensive planner are very large scale.
Yeah, they're large.
You're not making a recommendation that's finite like that.
Yeah, I know.
They're talking about revising the zoning. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are, they are talking about that too. So.
Yeah.
But I think some, well, would, is this something that you would want to be in? Do you feel it would be helpful to have you in? But I think some, well, would, is this something that you would want to be in? Do you feel it would be helpful to have you in? Because we'll make it.
What I, I could either provide notes in advance or I could attend the meeting, but I just know Tuesdays are very tough for me.
Yeah. I, I leave the, uh, sixth. I'm gone for ten days. So the Wednesday, the fifth would be the last opportunity or Monday, the third.
You're gone for ten days, but you'll, um, so I don't think we can go to Mondays because that's court night. And if in case we have to be in, in session, in session, I don't know what other nights. I know there's ZBA nights and, and ACCARC nights all in. Does ACCARC meet in court as well, um, Kirsten?
If we're in person, we're also in the court and that's the second Wednesday of the month.
Judd, we're not making any determinations.
No, but.
First discussion.
And can we meet by Zoom? I mean, basically that's, that's the question. Can we meet by Zoom even though we're not making any?
I, I would still, I, I would still prefer to handle this as an open meeting, Charlene.
Oh, no, I understand that, but an open meeting by Zoom, because I don't think anybody, I don't think everybody is going to be able to make a person-to-person meeting. And I'm saying, you know.
It depends on whether, it depends on whether we can do it in accordance with the open meetings law, which means the, you know, the executive order would have to be extended again.
So what's, how long does the executive, um?
They're going, they're going on thirty-day increments.
Yeah, so it now goes through September twelfth, so.
Because Katie doesn't go out.
Yeah, but she, she's, she's not, this is the problem. We're.
Oh, yes, just the, yeah.
We're a board.
Well, can I, can I make a recommendation here? It seems to me that if we had a clear definition from the, from the subcommittee or the, what are you calling it? The, uh?
Well, it's not from the steering committee. We really want this from the, from the, um, the consultant who wants to meet with us.
The consultant. If we had some kind of clearer definition, as Jan is alluding to the fact that, you know, it's not really details within the zoning, it's broad brush concepts, uh, uh, if we had a, we could individually, uh, write in uh, and submit our thoughts on it. And it's not like any revelation is going to come out of our, uh, out of our meeting together. And, and there is, it is complicated to get everybody together and pick a night and a place that are open for the public.
Yeah, we, um, sometimes there's good things that happen out of people saying one thing and, and, you know, so even if you say walkable communities, what's that mean to people? You know, do we need sidewalks? Does it mean that we have residential and commercial intermixed? I mean, what are we, what are we saying we would like to see and?
That's a good list you got going there. Keep it up.
So, so, um, yeah, so this, this I think is something that, well, okay, what I guess I'm going to say is I, I think we all agree that this would be easier to do at a, at, at what we hope would be a relatively short, contained, separate meeting. I'm going to ask Kirsten to almost put together a, when, assuming we might have to show up in the courthouse, what kind of days are those courthouses open? And then maybe at our next meeting, we can.
Or, you know, like a, you know, what is it? Like a, just like a doodle survey. Just find out available nights and.
All right. So I, I would love to set it up by email. I just know that sometimes in the past that's been resisted, but let's, let's try to do it. Um, so Kirsten, if you set up.
Well, even, even if, even if we at least get some dates, maybe we announce it at the September meeting and, and move from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
What kind of range of dates are we looking at?
I think we're looking at between September and November. You know, between our September meeting, because we would make the decision at our September meeting, but I don't think anybody wants to go beyond our November meeting and start getting into Thanksgiving and the holidays and, you know, so it's got to be done sometime. I would think between our September meeting and our November meeting. Okay. Well, thank you for that. And that's a good plan. Um, we have two items of correspondence. Richfield, Connecticut, let us know that they plan to amend the town code regarding the prohibition of cannabis establishments. I think on this, if everyone agrees, we send a letter to the town board telling them that we have no comment. And, um, the same with New Canaan. They are actually rezoning one, one, uh, parcel, I think, on their, you know, fifty-one Main Street from a B residence zone to a new zone that has housing redevelopment zone in it. I, I think again, we send it, I've looked, oh, do I have to do this by motion? Judd?
Uh, yeah, they, you, you would, uh, just authorizing you to sign a letter to the town board.
Okay. So for the first one, for Richfield, Connecticut, I'd look for a motion to, um, authorize me on behalf of the planning board to send a no-comment letter to the town board.
So moved.
Thank you, Jerome. And, uh, Bruce, seconding? Any discussion on this? Now, Paul, um, Charlene? Bruce?
Aye.
Uh, Jerome?
Aye.
And I'll say aye as well. So, um, get that letter written. The second, second correspondence is, um, New Canaan, Connecticut. They are rezoning one parcel on, uh, fifty-one Main Street. Again, I have, I would look for a motion to authorize me on behalf of the planning board to send a no-comment letter to the town board. Uh, Bruce, you're making a motion and do I have a second? Uh, it looks like Jerome got his hand up first. Okay. Any discussion? I will poll the board. Charlene?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
And I'll also say aye. So that's done. Okay. The minutes of July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, um, again, there are transcripts.
I move, we accept those minutes as.
Thank you, Jerome.
Goodbye.
And, and Charlene is seconding, right? Okay. Any further discussion? I'll poll the board. Charlene? Charlene?
Aye.
Uh, Bruce?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
And I'll also say aye. So the minutes are approved. As previously discussed, our next meeting date is September twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. In person unless the emergency declaration is extended again, and we should know that a little bit earlier this time. And if it is extended, we will meet virtually by Zoom again. I'd look for a motion to adjourn the meeting at ten-twenty-eight. Uh, Bruce?
So moved.
Thank you.
I had Jerome second it.
Okay, any discussion on this tonight, guys?
None at all.
Okay, um, Charlene?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye. Oh, aye.
That's Jerome.
Aye.
And I'll say aye. So we get to adjourn. Um, thank you. I think a really pretty productive.